And welcome to the city council's study session of Tuesday, September the 4th, 2018. We have two items on our agenda. The first item is a discussion regarding Cleveland County or Cleveland Area Rapid Transit, CART, funding for transportation services. And Catherine Walker will do the presentation. Chris Glenn let us know this morning that he was very ill and cannot come, but we are going to set another meeting time for him to come and visit with you all. He wants to do that. He felt very badly that he couldn't come. So Catherine, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. And let me just say, it's not just me here. We've got Sean, O'Leary, and Anthony, Francisco, who have also been involved in these discussions and will help back me up with questions that you all may have. I wanted to start with a little bit of background about bus service in Norman. The city first contracted with the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority, COTA, out of Oklahoma City, for a six-bus route transportation system back in 1978. It was just a one-year contract, and that contract expired after one year due to poor ridership. A couple of years later, OU came along and started what was then called the Campus Area Rapid Transit System, and funded all of it initially, hoping that interest would increase and there would be partnership opportunities to expand the service throughout Norman. In 1985, the city adopted a resolution so CART could expand to non-university-related services and qualify for federal funds. Those are now called Federal Transportation Administration Funds, or FTA funds. You'll hear that mentioned quite a bit. And then the name was changed to Cleveland Area Rapid Transit to reflect the expansion to city service. CART now transports more than 1 million passengers annually, with seven city routes and up to six university routes, and a weekday commuter route called the Sooner Express. And then also CART Access, which is a paratransit service provided to the elderly, disabled, and other people who just aren't able to ride the bus. In the comprehensive transportation plan that the city did and adopted back in 2014, we incorporated a lot of elements from a 2008 CART long-range plan. A transit subcommittee was appointed by council to study transit in Norman as part of the comprehensive transportation plan, and that subcommittee identified three major deficiencies in our bus service. This was limited Saturday and evening service, absence of nighttime and Sunday service, and then the need for increased service frequency. The committee recognized that inadequate funding was the biggest constraint to increasing services and suggested multiple potential funding strategies like limited terms, sales tax, property tax, increased fares, things like that. Ultimately, in the adopted plan, there were eight recommendations related to transit, and these are those recommendations. Obviously, it all has to do with expanding services, matching CART Access service hours to fixed route service hours, adding the Sunday service, extending service hours on other routes, developing a grid network, and then adding additional frequency and new bus routes in student areas. In FYE 18, this is the funding that was provided for transit. OU received FTA funds in the amount of $1.7 million. They also have a student transit fee that's charged to all of their students, and that's almost 1.7, it's 1.68 million. The city of Norman kicked in $575,000. They received $250,000 from the fare box. This includes the game day shuttle, which is a pretty good portion of that funding source.
Is that, Catherine, I was wondering, is that fare box, is that separate from, or is that just part of if you pay cash when you ride? It all goes into that 250,000?
Right, right. The state of Oklahoma provides $150,000 in funding per year. Advertising yields about $100,000, and then the Norman Regional Hospital contributes $50,000. So it's about a $4.5 million funding for this service, but their expenses in FYE 18 totaled $4.8 million. They had an operating loss of $352,000. And so that kind of brings us to our first issue here.
Catherine, do we know what their fund balance is? Do they have $10 million in the bank? Do they have $20,000 in the bank? I mean, is this?
This is just the CART budget alone. Obviously, their larger budget, this is encapsulated in that. I don't know what their-
It's just part of this, it's a light item in the large budget, it's not a separate fund or nothing.
Excludes parking, though.
Yeah, this is just CART, not parking.
Excludes parking.
That is important to note. So we have some short-term challenges and some long-term challenges, as you all know. And so I'm going to talk about the short-term issues first, and that really comes from that operating loss that I just talked about. What they're expecting this year is an operating loss of about $240,000. And they presented three options to address the funding gap. You all received the letter that we received in early August, and then we've met with OU representatives in the last week and had a number of conversations internally. And these are really the options to address the funding gap from the city's perspective based on OU's request, and that's additional funding from the city, service reductions or eliminations, or a combination of the two to try and achieve that savings of $240,000. These are some of the possible service cuts or reductions that OU has proposed originally in their original letter. They proposed cutting CART Access Zone 2. This is not a highly-used service, and it involves driving to outer limits of Norman to provide access to the disabled and elderly community. And although it's not maybe cost-effective, it provides an important service that that community may not otherwise have. So OU came back in our meeting last week and suggested another cut instead of this one, but this one did represent a savings of about $164,000. Another proposal was to eliminate Saturday service. This is their lowest ridership day of the week, and that's about $123,000 savings. And then the replacement cut for the CART Access original proposal was to go back to one-hour frequencies on Main Street in Alameda. About five years ago, they changed that from one hour to every 30 minutes to provide more convenient service, but it could be taken back to one-hour frequency. It would inconvenience passengers, but it at least wouldn't eliminate service, and so that would be a savings of about $150,000. And then they offered up for council to propose any other options for service cuts or reductions, and I would point you to Attachment 5 to the packet you received. That kind of shows you, based on last year's expenses, what each route costs. And then they also have some pretty good data from ridership surveys that show how many of those passengers were OU passengers, how many were other passengers for the city, and how many passengers total rode on those. And so you can kind of get an idea of what routes may be less used compared to others and what may be more needed to develop any suggestions. So the feedback we're looking for is really, what does the city want to do, what does council want to do to address that $240,000 funding gap? Do we want to increase our funding? Do we want to cut some of these services listed here, some others that are on, maybe that you developed from looking at their cost analysis? Or do we want to cut one service and provide gap funding for the remainder of that $240,000 target? So that's really what I'm looking for feedback on from you all. As the mayor said, CART representatives are going to be here. Unfortunately, Mr. Glenn is sick, so we will take whatever feedback we get here and continue to work with OU to develop some solutions for this year.
Well, I'll start out with, I mean, I'm not, I think we need to spend a little time studying this before we just start saying, let's cut this or let's cut that. And I appreciate the fact, I know there's been several conversations. We brought it up at the meeting about would they be interested in going in jointly with us on a study of how we could streamline services or improve services or go it alone or whatever. And they were not particularly interested in doing that because, I mean, they're looking at this primarily as a budget cut, and I think they've kind of figured out, if we're just doing these student routes, we can do it for that amount of money. But I think that we need to continue on with that ourselves because, in addition to how can we pick up some of these services, are there ways we could streamline services? Are there other kinds of smaller vehicles? I mean, there are lots of things happening in mass transit that, if you want to look at this as an opportunity, that we will have an opportunity to look at because the federal money would be coming to us. And so we would have more say about how that federal money is being used. As much as I understand that the CART Access Zone 2 is really the most expensive per person, having met with the disabilities community several times, or representatives of that community that do a lot of advocacy, I just feel like, in the middle of our accessibility, we just finished this accessibility study, and it's just so critical to our residents that are mobily challenged, and that's including a growing number of our seniors. I would really hate to see us cut that service because many of them have, that's it, they don't have any other way unless we can come up with an alternative to CART Access in terms of, are there some other kinds of vehicles that could be used?
Well, and these are really proposals just to get us through this year, and some of what the mayor spoke to are more long-term issues.
Right.
And so if you want me to move on, I can talk a little bit more about those. So beyond the current fiscal year, OU has let us know that they no longer desire to provide city bus service. The current model that we use, where the university provides the service and the city pays for a portion of the services, is pretty unique. When we look at other university communities, most communities, you'll see the city provide the service, or another provider provide the service, and the university will pay oftentimes that provider for services on campus. So the goal for OU is to transfer the city portion of bus service to another operator by the end of this fiscal year. There's a lot of issues here that would have to be worked through, but because CART receives federal transportation authority or administration dollars, they're restricted on where they can transfer those federally-funded assets, their buses, their other facilities that have been paid for with 80% federal money. The FTA is going to have to look to that. They're going to have to talk about how those facilities could be transferred and what, if anything, OU would have to pay for assets they want to keep, and what the recipient of all of those assets, whether it's the city or another entity, would have to pay to get those assets. Most of these are done within 80/20 split, and so 80% federal funds, but OU has put in the other 20%, and so that's going to take a lot of work, and it would have to be done in coordination with the FTA. So if you just pull out those OU shuttle or OU bus pieces, OU does want to continue providing that service for their students. But if you pull those out and pull out the OU student transit fee, these are the available funds based on this fiscal year for non-campus operations. So you see, that's about 2.7, almost $2.8 million. OU, the game day shuttle, they keep that money, so you see a little reduction there. You see our anticipated FYE 19 contribution, which has gone up from last year. But you also see there at the bottom that the expenses, if you look at that cost analysis they've provided, and you just take those expenses for the city fixed route bus services and that CART Access City Disability Service, it's already exceeding the available sources of revenue. So we have a potential, whoever operates, it has a potential annual operational shortfall based on these numbers of around $900,000. So obviously, some works would have to be done there, whether it's the city, or COTA, or some other provider, to determine how to make that work. So these are the things that we need to continue working on with your feedback and involvement. But we're going to need more information about transitioning from one provider to another under FTA rules. Sean has already reached out to our ODOT representative who deals with the FTA funds to begin those discussions about how that would work. We have the capital needs or buses and facilities that were funded in part by the FTA we'll have to look at. Whether or not we want or can take over the city bus operations, there is that potential for the operational shortfall and how we deal with that. And then where would we get the revenue to acquire the buses and the facilities? Again, it would just probably be that 20% portion that OU paid for those items. We can explore whether COTA, which operates under the name of Embark, you'll see that in Oklahoma City a lot, we can explore their interest in providing city bus service. We have contacts there and have made some initial contact with them. And then we may want to engage a consultant to assist in our consideration. This is a pretty technical analysis, I think, when you look at how the federal funds get used and how those things get transferred, and then just taking on, potentially taking on an entire bus system to provide that service to our community. We'll probably need a consultant to assist with that. And so that's kind of the feedback and direction we need. If you want us to continue to explore all of this, we can do that. We're pretty early in our consideration of those. If there's one direction over another you'd rather us go, we can certainly do that as well. We just wanted to bring this to you to get your initial feedback so we can keep working on it.
I do think that's one other thing that we need to be thinking about in this whole mix, and that is the RTA discussion.
Yeah.
So if we're really going to enter into a regional transit authority, which we're going to be looking at those documents coming up here really quite soon, in the next month or two, then that could also impact, because a big portion of that, we always think about commercial rail, but a really big portion of that is bus service or trolley or something like that. So if we're going to enter, if we think that is feasible, then we need to be, as we make these plans for the next two or three years, we need to be thinking about how would that roll into another system. Councilmember Holman.
To me, the best option for that would be to, if we could get to be a part of Embark or the OKC system and just absorb us in.
Yes, Embark has shown interest.
And that would be part of the RTA at some point would be, we'd already be part of an integrated metro system at that point, maybe, and it would be an easier transition when the bigger RTA comes along.
Yeah. Councilmember Dittman.
I had a couple of questions about the financial part of this. Is the 3.6 million number, is that include any depreciation or capture of capital investment? Or is that purely, truly operating expenses? Because it seems like they're spending a lot of money on the non-OU stuff.
My impression was, and anyone else was in the meeting, feel free to correct me, is that it was just operations, the salaries of their bus drivers and personnel are rolled into that, but I think it's operations only.
They do speak specifically about replacement of buses, and that is not included in that number.
But is it, is there any, is it like, from a county standpoint, are they including as an expense depreciation, capturing depreciation costs or things like that?
No.
Those are true operating expenses. And then we talked about the buses, the 80/20, I'm trying to understand what you're saying, Catherine. Would we potentially have to write a check to get some of those assets? Like, if we went on our own, we presumably want some of the assets that OU and CART currently manages and uses, are we going to be expected to stroke a check for some unknown amount at this point in time to say, okay, you get these 10 buses that are servicing the non-OU routes currently, we have to write somebody a check for X millions of dollars?
That's possible.
For their 20% that they pay, yes.
OU hasn't decided that one way or the other yet, but that is possible.
Councilmember Castleberry.
So if they wanted to keep their buses for their uses, we may be looking at buying fully-new buses.
They said they needed to keep-
Not just 20%, but we'd have to buy 100%.
We'd have the same 80/20.
We'd get some 80/20.
Yeah, they've indicated they would like to keep 12 buses for their campus operations. I'm not sure how large their fleet is, but that's obviously not the entire fleet, and so there would be some available for the city for Embark.
I didn't hear that. I think it's already there. It seems like, I mean, there were a lot more buses than I thought they had.
Yeah, they have backups.
Each route has two at least, going at a time. It's around 30-minute intervals.
Councilmember Bierman.
So to kind of put this in a larger perspective, I don't know if this is for Steve, or Anthony, or Catherine, can anyone give me an estimate of what the value is of the uncompensated services we provide OU? Fire, emergency vehicles, police on game day? What value are they getting from city services that they're not paying for?
Well, they do, there is a cost sharing on game day services. That was negotiated a number of years ago, and that's, you know, that's, but if you get into the fire department issue, that would, I've never seen a number that's been pegged to that.
But I would imagine that it's not zero.
Do they pay any?
No, that's been the discussion in the past, is that just as no one pays for a fire call, they are citizens of Norman as well.
They have their own police department, so, you know, for a large portion of those calls, you know, they foot the bill themselves, but for fire, we foot the bill for any fire calls on campus.
Sales tax to pay.
And we use the sales tax to pay for it.
And didn't we have to buy an apparatus specifically for their buildings?
We have tall-
I'm not sure the fire shop specifically, I wouldn't say.
NBC Suites is more than 10 stories.
Long ladder for high-rise.
They, for example, talked about a fire that they battled from above in a residence just recently, and that was very useful.
Now, Oklahoma City and Embark, that's a public, is that a public trust? How's that structured? Is that something we could model, or?
We can model an Aberon Trust Authority. We could, these services could be a part of that, the way it was originally done. It was to include the Central Oklahoma region, potentially, and so they could provide services here without any change to their trust indenture. It is a trust that, where the city of Oklahoma City appoints the trustees, their council members don't serve on the trust, I don't think, but they appoint trustees to the trust, and so it's operated like, anyway, would be here, it's operated like that for Oklahoma City.
Unless they're talking about us being part of trust, but if we set up a trust similar to theirs for ourselves, would that give us the ability to issue bonds and debt, or that trust authority kind of like we do?
Yes.
Yes, well, we could issue bonds other than existing.
General fund, an enterprise fund, so to speak.
It's one thing we could do, yes.
To look at that one.
Councilmember Holman.
Can that be combined with parking? Can that be like a?
Yeah, that's the COTA model, transportation and parking.
So then, maybe, pardon me for not understanding right away, but so then we could have more parking authority, like, we've kind of wanted to have a parking authority, and combine that with our, would that be revenue generating to a point of creating a?
Potentially.
Come and make revenue for that?
I think on the parking side, it gets a little lopsided when you start building parking garages, possibly, and so I don't know that parking would make the enough to offset any operational loss on the transit side, but that's something we could definitely look at.
Depends on how you can pay for your parking garage.
Right.
That makes a big difference, but that's a good observation because, I mean, I do believe that's how OU helps fund everything. It's the parking side that makes the money. Councilmember Dittman.
I'm just thinking about what Stephen and Srida have said. Have we had any conversations with the county? I mean, if, for example, RTA is going to happen, Moore's going to have stops there. We're talking with the county about multi-jurisdictional parking authority. I don't know if they'd be interested in discussion about a county transit system, obviously, that wouldn't maybe serve every community, but Moore and Norman, you know, is there some economy of scale of having that conversation? I don't know if Moore has their own transit service or not, but is there some economy of scale of having that conversation? And then, when the regional transit authority maybe happens and we have these stops, there's an easier integration process, whether it's through COTA or through something we do in Cleveland County, to just mesh those two things kind of together as a possibility.
The county is part of the RTA.
No, I understand that they are that, but they're not a part of CART currently, and I don't know if they, you know, and if they brought money to the table, we brought money to the table, Moore brought money to the table, like I said, you know, there's always, there's going to be a fixed overhead cost of some staffing and, you know, whatever. And if we can, you know, manage that overhead cost by having partners, whether it's the city of Moore, or the county, or both, it seems like there might be some economies of scale there that would at least warrant a conversation.
Councilmember Holman.
Do we currently, and I think I know the answer, but permit parking, on-street parking down around the campus or anywhere in the city, is that, do students pay to park, like, on the street?
We talked about it earlier.
Yeah, there are meters.
Well, I mean, I'm talking about the residences that we have where there's no problem.
We discussed that, but we haven't.
Okay, it's not a, for a minute.
Any meters parking, we have meters in campus corner.
The meters, yeah, but I'm talking about like the residential streets where we're having the big lines of cars, and it's obviously a student problem.
Whether the charge is beside the meter parking.
Is that a revenue stream that would be, in any way, big enough to do anything in this?
Haven't heard that idea through the parking discussions previously, but anything's possible. I think it's really been more focused on building more parking structures and parking lots where we could capture the revenue that way, which is sort of typical, I mean, this is a model.
We have talked some about people that are building, for example, in Center City, we did have that discussion about people that built, you know, multiple family units. We talked about them possibly paying a fee for parking places on the street.
Reserve parking, slot 23 is yours in front of your house.
You get, you get 10 spaces along the street, and they have to pay a fee that goes along with it.
Would that be, would that be very many? I don't have any idea.
Probably not. We looked at Fayetteville, theirs was like $200 a year, but you get reserve parking in front of your house. But it's like, the guys sticker on your car to match like this, and otherwise they had tickets and stuff.
I have lived places where they have zone parking like that within this four or five block area. You have to have a sticker on your car to park in this area, and you pay 200 bucks a year or something like that.
Be good on my street.
So it is a, it is a possible revenue source. Councilmember Holman.
So when looking at just the city fixed route system, you know, like, if we were to take it over, for example, the Sooner Express is $153,000. 25% of the riders are students coming from Oklahoma City to Norman or going back to Oklahoma City to the, you know, the OU campus up there. And just, that would seem like a route we probably wouldn't be able to afford to provide anymore.
Accepted. Our finance director.
You have to provide it?
He writes it.
There you go.
Just a joke, no favorite deals going on here.
I'm just saying, like, going all the way up to Oklahoma City and not getting, we don't get any funding from Oklahoma City to have that. The Social Security Express, I think that's a very important route. I mean, not a whole lot of people ride it, but the people that do need it, but it's in Moore, and we don't get any help from Moore to help pay for that route. I mean, you know, I think that's an important point about the county involvement, where we've got some of that going on. I think what just kind of, it's- I think what just kind of, it's hard for me to get my head around this a little bit because a lot of students ride these city routes. A lot of, like, 106,000 trips from students in FY 2018. So, I mean, whatever system we do is still going to be going to campus, right? I mean, it's still going to be serving, there's, I mean-
Well, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be.
I mean, we have City of Norman residents that are employees of OU that ride the bus to campus. I mean, it's in the middle of the city too, so how will it not?
Well, we can also charge higher fares. I mean, we can also charge for the people-
Many riders are $240,000 short, so you're 25 cents per trip, but again, that's-
Share just a conversation that Susan or Catherine mentioned. The federal transit administration in Oklahoma is represented by ODOT. The Oklahoma Transit Administration has a transit division. I spoke to the director of the transit division this morning just to share this conversation. Her, kind of her parting words for me was, "Be very careful because that 1.7 million in federal transit administration dollars has lots of rules and regulations attached to it." So whether the city would run the system or Embark or any others, FTA or ODOT is going to be determining whether we receive those funds or how we transfer assets or any number of these things we're talking about. It's going to be a very federally and state-regulated transfer process, I guess, was the message. She said, "Go slow, make careful decisions, and have us at the table with you before you go any further than tonight." So that was the message from our FTA.
Absolutely, thank you. That, that's a really important point, which is why I think we need to have a consultant help us before we start doing a lot of things.
Yes, Councilmember Castleberry.
One thing I'd point out is on the RTA discussions, you know, they're looking at that being a sales tax. And the current discussion is asset sales tax, which is fine for Oklahoma City and more, they can just, council could do that. But in Norman, Ward 5 people are going to have to pay for transit bus service that's not going to go to Ward 5.
Where?
Not going to go to Ward 3 that much. And so it's going to be more light rail out there. So, you know, we're going to have to get, you know, when I was in those discussions, my first thing was like, "This is not going to pass in Norman." Because it was pretty much just the light rail. There wasn't enough feeders for buses up like this. It would be a very hard thing to pass. And so that would be in addition. So we're looking at having a half-cent sales tax vote next couple of years on a light rail system in addition to this. So, you know, we want to make sure that we coordinate those type of things and it may just, timing is just-
It's a lot of, a lot of things to look at.
I know part of the discussion of the RTA, though, is that the sales tax proposal would be by precinct.
Right.
So, so it is possible that, for example, if Moore didn't want to participate, they wouldn't necessarily have a stop there and they wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't be taxed.
They can choose to opt out.
You can opt out, but you don't have a service.
That has changed.
It's all by municipality.
It's going to be a whole city.
It's going to be the whole city's in, whole city's out.
Yeah, which is a big deal for Norman because of Ward 5, really.
Yes, I got the same thing, you know, in 3, because all the stops are along the railroad. I mean, it doesn't really, 3 and 8 don't, if I, I mean, kind of-
It's where the bus system routes matter.
Would it allow you-
It's where they go.
That's, that's just, that's just the, the commercial rail part. Would it allow you to have a more robust bus system?
Yes.
Where we could make-
Right.
And now when we get into automated vehicles, can we have little automated vehicles going out to little acts?
We do have some legitimate spurs that could happen and, and like to Tinker, because we have a lot of folks that work at Tinker. And, and to the medical center, you know, there, there could be some spurs if we had a revenue stream, a regional transit authority revenue stream. So I think it's important for us to set this up, whatever happens, in a way that will integrate well-
Right.
With that.
Yeah.
So it's going to take some wisdom.
Councilmember Holman.
I would just note, too, that there is some study that shows, I mean, multiple studies, but a lot of, on this subject about rideshare and even automated vehicles do not solve the traffic congestion problem. That rideshare is still people, individuals riding in individual cars and it doesn't solve the problem of cars being on the streets and congestion that's going to happen from it. So, you know, I think it's very important that we have a bus system, metropolitan-wide, but in Norman specifically, that's integrated with a, you know, that's what the RTA is all about, is having multiple forms of transportation.
Right.
And not just, yes, the, the one that everybody likes to talk about, because it maybe is the most fun, is commuter rail system connecting Norman to Edmund and Tinker Air Force Base and Rogers Airport at some point, and stuff like that. But that system doesn't work very well if there's not a, a bus system that's efficient. And, I mean, and, and things like that. And Oklahoma City, you know, has already spent a lot of money, millions of dollars fixing up the Santa Fe Station downtown and doing things like that to prepare for this. And I think the biggest concern I have right now is the continuation of service. We have a lot of people in Norman relying on this system right now. And even an interruption, if, I mean, the thought of us not having a functional bus system for even just a couple of months is kind of, kind of, I don't know how to even think about the impact that that would have on, you know, thousands of people, so.
Well, hopefully, that's not what we're looking at. What we're looking at is what can we do?
Just this FY 19, like, end of the year, we've got to have a whole new system in place and a whole new operation and that's, yeah.
That's why we've got to work with OU and say, "It's just not feasible. You guys just drop service in one year. You've got to give us a little bit of runway. We'll give us a time way here to get this in. And if maybe we need to make up the shortfall or, you know, the next item we talk about can solve that problem."
Yeah.
For a one- or two-year deal until we can actually work with them to, you know, not just put a Band-Aid on something, but actually take a stop to fix it and provide- which can't, we have to, I mean, I feel we have to provide transportation to people who are disabled who can't get around. You know, there are people like Anthony who are just cheap, that's a different deal. But, I mean-
For cares about the environment.
I know, he's, he's-
That's a sacrifice, riding from the city all the way down here.
He can ride in one of those scooters. As important as it is, people can't, just to get around it from a mobility standpoint, they have to have some, because that's just a something, a government function that you have to be able to take care of.
I think, I agree. Councilmember Bearman.
I just want to be sure that we're, that we don't give OU too big of a pass on this because, you know, 55% of the bus fare is paid with an OU ID. If you look at the ridership to and from, the vast majority are people going from their home to OU and from OU to their home. I mean, this is something that OU students rely on and make up a majority share of the ridership. And so for them to, for them to throw the burden on us is not reflective of who is actually relying on CART. And so, you know, I, I agree with Councilmember Holman that we need, that we need to be sure that there is no disruption in service, but I don't want the burden to be entirely on us to do that and to figure out what the solution is because we are, we are providing funding almost, almost based on non-OU ridership. I mean, OU ridership is such a, is such a large share of their ridership that for them to, for them to throw the burden on us is, is not reflective of the reality. And so while I do, while I do think we need to figure it out, I, I don't want them to simply wash their hands of this and say, "Well, this is your problem to solve." It's not, it's our problem to solve. And I'm worried that we're shifting a little too much into, "How do we solve the problem?"
Well, I mean, I, I think the conversation we had with them is more reflective of what you're saying than, well, I mean, what I'm hearing us talk about right now are, "What are some things we need to do on the city's behest to do, to start working on this?" I, I heard in the meeting that we're, you know, we're willing to work on this with you all if there is, and, and no negotiations have started. All that's happened is we got a letter and then we went and met with them and they said, "Well, we already understand that it's not going to be such a good thing to get rid of CART access." So, I mean, they spent a week and a half thinking about that and realized that was just really not a good plan at all. So we're just now starting in the conversations with them, so.
But they're giving us to the end of the fiscal year, so, I mean, they're not looking at long-term solutions. They're saying, "Well, you need to have an op, we need to figure this out by the end of the fiscal year because we don't want to be dealing with this anymore."
Well, there's a lot of things for them to think about, too, because if there's 55%, you know, of their students or whatever the figure is, and I know what you're talking about, if, if we have that many of their students riding, then they're going to lose a lot of income if they're, if they're not providing something. And if we're providing it, then the income comes to us, not to them. So, I mean, we really just haven't had any of that discussion at all.
Transport of these students, I want some of that tuition.
Councilmember Hickman.
Do we know whether or not the OU students, since, since there is the student fee that OU charges, do they get to ride the buses for free? They don't pay fare?
Yeah.
And that would include, like, the city fixed route buses that were proposed to take over?
Right.
What is the, the, do we know what the fare is about?
75 cents for a single trip on the fixed routes. The Sooner Express is $3.
So if, for example, we charge the OU passengers a dollar, let's say, and just to make it even, there's 106,000 estimated number of OU passengers on city fixed route bus services, that'd be 100 grand. Not that that makes up the full 900,000, but we could monetize those students riding the bus.
If you assume that the ridership would stay the same.
I understand. Or the other possibility is like, either the Lindsey, I guess it's maybe Lindsey West, I think is the one that runs kind of through campus, you know, that had 37, 38%.
Lindsey West basically goes down Lindsey Street, turns on 24th North and circles back around on Brooks and goes back up.
Goes through the campus, right, like past College and Chautauqua?
The terminal.
Elm.
It goes down Lindsey, past those streets, yes.
Yeah, so it runs through the center of campus.
Yes. If you call Lindsey the center of campus.
It goes to the Duck Pond where it has to, has to go through campus, has to get there. That's for sure. Stops on campus.
But that's the, that's the terminal for all of these routes, Alameda, Lindsey's.
Yeah, just, just to be clear, we haven't agreed to anything. This is just what they said. If we kept on doing this, this is how much of a shortfall and we want you to, to make up the shortfall. So that, that's all. That's where we are in the discussion, that's what they've said. Okay, Councilmember Holman.
I was just going to say, yeah, we don't have a transit station either. We don't have a place or a location for it anyway. So, that just made me think of that. Just something else we'd have to do, we'd have to find a place to build a-
Maybe it would be a depot, just like.
For, uh, seven buses, that'd be a tough fit around there, but yeah.
We do have a transportation facility. Yeah, they have. Oh, I don't know. All right.
So we need to discuss the, I was going to say, do we need to discuss the, this year? If we want to, do you want to wait, have that discussion about? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I mean, we do need to give Catherine some kind of direction on what do we want to save and what can we continue to negotiate on? I've, I've said, you know, I think it's really important to keep CART access zone 2. I don't know if there's any other more cost-effective way that could be run than it's being run right now, so we don't really know that. But I would believe not likely to see us.
I mean, I used to ride the Main Street Route when it was an hour and it was really inconvenient, but keeping the service would be-
More unfortunate.
That's the least, out of those three options, that's the least, least harm. And it saves 150,000.
Okay, that's two suggestions that that would be, if we had to give something up, the going from a half-hour to one hour should be preferable, this and other things.
I have a question. Councilmember Scott.
Um, does the CART service provide access to OU's OKC campus at all?
They have the Sooner Express. What, where, where all does it go?
It goes I-35, gets off downtown, goes up Lincoln to 13th Street, Byrd Library and around the Health Science Center campus, then up to the State Capitol and back downtown.
They would keep that? They'd keep that?
We would have to do it.
Yeah, that, that would be one of the services.
150,000.
So they wouldn't provide, because those are their students, too, so.
153,000.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bearman.
So are, are they expecting us to come up with the savings? They're going to, what, what cost savings or, or changes has OU proposed? Have they found any efficiencies that they can, that they can put up alongside what we're trying to do?
I don't know what efficiency that they've come up with. I'm assuming, we didn't, we did not talk about that.
They, they did indicate that they had made some of their own cuts of their routes, but I don't recall exactly what those were. I don't know, but I have my notes.
We didn't get any kind of a handout or anything like that.
Because I'd like to know what they're also trying to do because it seems like they just kind of threw it all at us and said, "You come up with a solution."
I think they would say that their student fee is paying for the services that they are calling their campus shuttles.
Which, I mean, I understand that, but again, if you look at, if you look at the student ridership, even on the city fixed bus routes, you're still looking at, I can't remember what the number was, I think it's at least 30%. 30.6% on the city fixed bus route service is estimated percentage of OU passengers. So, I mean, this isn't entirely our burden to bear. Yes, the OU campus shuttles are 95.6% OU students, but they still make up a sizable percentage of the city fixed bus routes. And so, again, I just, I take exception to the fact that they kind of gave us this problem and said, "You come up with a solution." So I'd like to know what they're looking at to put up alongside us because I don't want to be the only bad guy, the one who's deciding what routes to cut or services to increase. This is not just our problem and we shouldn't be the only ones coming up with solutions.
Okay.
I mean, I think we can keep talking to them. We can't, I mean, I would say you just can't tell us, you're going to cut it down in a year. We've got a-
Not even a year, they gave us till August 31st.
Well, but the, but that deadline went past, so I'm just saying, I, I'm not sure how their debts are. They didn't, they didn't do anything August 31st. So are they going to do something in this year? Are they going to do something in 19? I mean, I think those are goals, like, those are asked, but I don't think those are, this is, this is what's going to happen if you guys don't do something.
They said they would sit down and talk to us.
Yeah, I think as long as they want to talk, but I'm like you, I don't, it's not all our problem. But we've got to approach them with the same way, we've got to solve this together.
Councilmember Hickman.
Sean, I'm just curious, and I, and I know you've got a crack team of people already working on this because you've got resources coming out of your ear. We've been talking about a transportation bond and I'm sitting over here as supportive, I ask my questions about how we're going to have to stroke a check to buy the buses and Steve is talking about how we don't have a transit location. But we have some new capacity in our village that we already talked to CPTC about. I mean, is it conceivable to say, "We're going to take the $72 million for a transportation bond," I'm just totally making these numbers up, so, you know, about 5 million bucks and say, "And we're going to buy this dirt, we're going to build this building and that's going to be our, our bus." When we take over, when we take over from OU and when we join RTA, I know, by the way, we're going to buy five brand-new buses and then we'll negotiate the rest with OU, so we have something to start with. I don't know, 5 million dollars, I don't know if that could be a separate item where people go on it up or down, if it could be rolled into the whole $72 million bond package. And that may be totally inconceivable and totally not anything that we could even do or others think about, but we have an opportunity with that bond coming up. or others think about, but we have an opportunity with that bond coming up and we have an opportunity with this discussion that maybe we can, and then if, if we do something like that, that, you know, let's say in theory, then that gives us something to go to the city more into the Cleveland County to negotiate with and say, look, we're gonna bring X millions of dollars in and create a hub here, um, don't want to be a part of this. And if they don't, then we've made an investment as a community to build the hub and to buy some buses and maybe provide better, more efficient services, but I don't know if that transportation bond is even a possibility.
Anthony's probably a better source on that, but I think generally bond funds can be used for capital assets, capital investments.
So buying some dirt and building a building would qualify. And the bus.
The problem really is the operational expense.
Can we increase the fee?
That, I think it's gonna take us several months just to get our heads wrapped around how that's gonna work and what it's gonna cost, all that sort of thing. I think six, seven months would be minimum to get to a settling point here to say, this is what we can do within the FDA regulations. Again, the FDA can withdraw all that 1.7 if we're not meeting their standards. And so we've got to make sure that we're meeting those federal requirements in terms of providing transit service first and then sort of build the assets around that.
I guess one, one of the, I mean, that would certainly present an opportunity for us. I guess one of the issues would be if we're really gonna try to get the bond issue on the ballot soon, it would be hard to have worked out knowing what it was we need, how much we needed, what we needed it for.
Give it authorization for a certain amount, I mean, it would be an exact number, it'd be a placeholder, wouldn't have to issue the bonds, but you can do it. I mean, if we came out, we don't do it, we do the RTA, at least we could have.
I'm, I'm all for doing whatever we can to get the transportation system stronger. I just know how many other transportation issues that, that we have that are already, you know, lined up. So if we could figure something out before it goes to the voters, you know, great. Okay, Stephen.
I was just gonna say, you know, one of the potential projects in that bond is a $28 million railroad separation, which may or may not be needed now or anytime in the relatively near future. $28 million just in, could do a lot of, could make a really nice, you know, we're talking about buying some property for future rail stations, but also that can make a really nice, uh, you know, for a fraction of that 28, you could build a really nice bus transportation hub in downtown Norman and then, you know, so I think that's something we really, I think there is definitely potential for that, even if we can't buy the buses with it, being able to build the facilities. That's, I would support that.
Any final comments or questions? So if we've given you enough, we've talked about some things we really don't want to take off, we've talked about some things that we might consider taking off, we want to know how much, what are the efficiencies they're, they're looking at? And we're gonna want to try to negotiate the best deal that we can and hold on to as many of these services as we can until August 31st or whatever the final date. And certainly a request that that date be extended if we can figure out ways to maybe move that timeline down.
Last question, I guess, Catherine, when you guys met with OU, did they mention anything about, you know, their, their requirement to add, you know, students, freshman sophomore living on campus, I mean, more students living on campus, then ideally they're not using the buses, but they have any impact on what they thought that would do other than help them, their student housing problems?
We didn't get into that level of detail. So no, we didn't talk about that.
I know they're doing that to help themselves on a housing issue that they were built on, but.
There's an article in today's paper, maybe it's a paper about how they're having parking issues because of all the freshmen on campus in that classroom. So I know that that's on their radar, but that's not something we talked about.
And a lot can happen in the next year.
So I think we were just taking up.
All right. Second item on our agenda is a discussion regarding reapportionment of the University North Park tax increment finance district sales tax question. And Anthony, through the presentation, Jeff is here to answer questions.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, again, I'm Anthony Francisco, the Finance Director. Discussion that we're having came out of the August Finance Committee discussion on the topic of reapportioning, um, the sales tax that is going into the University North Park TIF fund, and these are just options we're gonna consider. First, a little bit of background on our current method of apportioning sales tax that is collected by the businesses in University North Park, and again, those businesses are just collecting their sales tax, submitting it to the state. The apportionment was adopted by the project plan in 2006. By that project plan, 60% of the collected sales taxes in University North Park businesses go to the UMP TIF fund, 40% goes to the city's general fund and capital fund. And I would remind you again that, um, only the general purpose sales tax, the general fund and capital fund is apportioned. The Norman Forward Sales Tax and Public Safety Sales Tax, it's not apportioned, 100% goes to those. The 60% is adjusted by transfer adjustments for those businesses that have relocated from someplace else in Norman to University North Park and closed their former location within a year. And it's also adjusted by the average annualized growth rate factor, which basically means that if the city's overall sales tax growth rate, uh, does not grow by the historic growth rate, then the amount of apportionment is adjusted on a pro-rata basis. After those adjustments, about $4 million in sales tax collections were apportioned to the TIF fund last fiscal year. Since 2006, with all the things that we have already paid for, after paying off the 2013 TIF notes, there is about $10.7 million that is cash on hand with the TIF trustee. You'll recall that when this presentation was made a few months ago, that was a little below, um, $10 million, but we again are apportioning money each month, about $350,000 per month, so that amount that's gone, has gone up a little bit. This is straight out of the presentation that was made to council a couple of months ago, but as you see, um, of the original total authorization of $54.7 million, we spent about $30 million in remaining authorization for projects under that 2006 project plan is about $25 million that remains authorized to be spent. And if there's any questions at any time, just stop me. So here's a synopsis of what the Finance Committee discussed in August on this topic. The discussion centered on the, the impact of the continuation of the sales tax apportionment and its impact on the general fund and the capital fund. We discussed the market feasibility and the desirability, really, of continuing those authorized projects individually and collectively. We talked about the legal commitments that, and the obligations of the city to finish those projects that were authorized in 2006 and what would happen if we decided to not do some of them. And we'll talk about that in some detail later on in this presentation. There was a lot of discussion about, uh, if we were to stop the apportionment of property tax, uh, what the impact of that would be on the Norman public schools, because as we talked about previously, um, it's not a dollar-for-dollar apportionment for them. They get a multiplier effect that actually benefits them from the apportionment of their property tax to the TIF fund. Then we talked about if we were to change the sales tax apportionment method, what, what we, what, what might we change it to? Would we change from 60% to some other percentage? Would we change to a fixed amount each year? And, and just, those are options that we'll talk about here. And then given those options, what, what impact that would have on the remaining life of the University North Park TIF and our ability to pay for those projects that we would choose to do, uh, in remaining authorizations. So what we found was that there was, out of that discussion, about 10 options that you could pursue. And, um, while we came up with these 10 options, just understand that you could do combinations of them. So there could be 15 or 20 different things that we might do, but what we hope to do tonight is to give you a basis for your discussion, for you to give us some direction on what you'd like us to of these options, uh, considering more detail. First one is to do nothing, just maintain where we are now, and we'll talk about each of these in detail. There was some discussion in August about, uh, reducing the apportionment of sales tax to 5% or 10% or to a fixed dollar amount each year. Then there was a discussion about eliminating some of the authorized projects or changing the amount of the authorization for some of those authorized projects. We could eliminate, uh, the two things that were discussed at the Finance Committee in particular were eliminating the authorization for the Lifestyle Center Cost Project and the Cultural Center Cost Project or both of those. So those are three individual considerations and options that we'll talk about in a minute. And then there was some discussion of, of ending the TIF altogether, just stopping where we are now. We have, you know, over $10 million on hand and whatever we can pay for with those $10 million is all we're gonna do and, and how council might want to, to approach from that standpoint. There are two other options on the table that were really not discussed in August, but they remain on the table from previous discussions. One is the council's Resolution Act you passed a few months ago to use the cultural for, uh, center authorization money, um, to pay for a senior center on the University North Park project area. And then to, um, to pursue the Statutor Review Committee's recommendation to add a project, uh, to the University North Park TIF authorization for a senior center. And again, we'll talk about each of these 10 options in a little bit of detail. So the first one is the do nothing option, steady as she goes, we just continue with what we're doing. The current sales tax, 60-40 split will remain, the property tax apportionment of 50-50 between the TIF, uh, fund and the taxing jurisdictions will remain, all of the authorized projects will remain with, at their current authorized level. If we were to, to do that, we would generate about enough money, uh, considering the $10.7 million that we have on hand now, uh, we generate the remaining $8 million or so that we would need in about two and a half years. And at that point, um, council could repeal, um, the sales tax and property tax apportionments. We'd have enough money on hand at that point to pay for all of the authorized projects and we wouldn't have any unmet obligation. So you wouldn't have to consider renegotiating any of the contracts that we have outstanding right now or anything like that. Two and a half years is a soon enough period that we believe that we wouldn't have to issue any more debt to pay for those projects that are authorized. It's gonna take some time to build the cultural center or the lifestyle center or whatever else is authorized, um, and we have enough money on hand to, to upfront those costs and we believe that, um, we don't have to issue any more debt to do nothing. You would have the benefit of the developers' obligations under those contracts remain in place. You remember that within some of the existing development agreements, the developer is on the hook to do some things and if they don't, they have to pay back some money, they have some clawback provisions, if you will. And if they don't meet their obligations, then some of this money gets paid back to the city. Uh, if we.
Councilmember Hickman.
Anthony, in that regard, let's just say that we do option one, do nothing and, um, we collect the funds for the Lifestyle Center, whatever it's called, the, yeah, the 8.25 million Lifestyle Center cost, but we don't ever end up, because I don't, I kind of see that with not really as a, a city project, but like a contractual obligation maybe to the developer that if the developer does something, we have to pay them, and I may be remembering that wrong, I'm looking at Jeff, but as opposed to the culture facility, which is something that city has more say over, yeah, we want to do a culture facility, we're gonna spend that money, we only spend the 8.25 million for Lifestyle Center if the developer does something. Okay, so my, I guess my question is.
There are no.
If we do nothing and, and the, if we do nothing, option one, and we collect that money and then the developer doesn't end up doing the Lifestyle Center, so we don't owe him the 8.25 million, how are those funds reapportioned? Like, do they go back proportionally to the AdVorum partners and to the city? What happens to that money that we capture, but we don't end up, or you could say the same for the culture facility, we don't end up doing it, we don't end up spending the money?
It's never been envisioned that money would go back, it's always been envisioned that you would be using them for some authorized project. And if you didn't use it for the Lifestyle Center, that you'd use it for some other authorized project, whether it be, you know, some other transportation improvements or some enhancements to Legacy Park, but some other authorized project you would envision it would be used for something like that.
Could the money, if the law allowed, I mean, could the money be, you know, because to do something else, that would require a change to the project plan, some kind of amendment, I assume, or something. I'm just saying, if we do nothing and we collect these monies and then the Lifestyle Center deal doesn't happen and we don't have to pay that to the developer, I don't know if there's something in existing development agreements or project plans or the law that would say, you know, 70.
What could happen is totally up to council. I'm, I'm telling you, what has happened in the past is that you'd use it for some other authorized project. But yeah, you could, you could say, let's return it, uh, to both the city, general fund, capital fund, and to the property taxing jurisdictions. That's one thing you could do.
Councilmember Castor.
Just to follow up on his point, so that doesn't happen, that might center, if the developer doesn't do the Lifestyle Center, they would, the clawbacks provision would come in. So we'd have another 8 million bucks sitting in the account.
Yeah, it's 8.3.
8.3, I mean, so we'd have another 8.3 million that would come in at top. And that would, that would, I would assume that would get reapportioned back to us, most parts, we spent it. The majority of the sales tax was upfront, or we just, I mean, it'd be the same, we have to go through the same calculation with statutory committee.
Neither the project plan nor the development agreements.
Address.
Address that issue about if we end up not finishing all the projects, uh, what happens with excess money? So it's something we probably are gonna have to discuss with the AdVorum taxing partners. But certainly if there's a similar type project that's consistent with what we're trying to achieve out there, uh, there would be a good argument to use it for that. Certainly there would be an equity argument to say it should be returned on a pro-rata basis.
So.
So we would probably need to sit down and have AdVorum taxing partners.
So if, because of the fact that it's a contractual agreement and we decide, well, right now, that's too much, you know, we don't want to get into some big legal thing with that, and we leave the 8 million something in there, and then it ends up that they don't ever come up with a project, then we have to decide, unless something comes along that we have not even thought about, wouldn't it be great if we took this money and invested it in something else? We'd have that 8 million plus the clawback money.
Theoretically.
What, what's theoretical about it? It means that it's gonna be a legal negotiation, is that what's the.
So you're right, that money would be available, uh, our recommendation would be that you go back to the AdVorum taxing jurisdictions and get their input on how you would use that consistent with the project plan amendment. Because if one of the provisions of the project plan was to do a, a regional draw retail center and we're saying that's not gonna happen, but now we have excess money we've collected, and you would go back to the, uh, Statutor TIF Committee and ask for a recommendation, then it would ultimately come back to council, just like all of these other amendments, and council has the final say. If, uh, if the recommendation from the AdVorum taxing jurisdictions is acceptable to council, then it can be passed by a simple amendment. If the recommendation is not what council wants to do, then it requires a supermajority to pass, so it would be that same process.
But from their standpoint, they want to build something so they, like, AdVorum tax line when it's done. That was what we agreed, I mean, I think they're looking at is, we want it built out because we benefit from AdVorum tax.
We don't think of Lifestyle Center, though, that's the difference.
Well, I know, but.
But you're saying.
Yeah, but either, both, both of them, they want either Lifestyle Center or a cultural facility because they want something generating AdVorum tax as opposed to a piece of land, whereas we don't want to tie up our sales tax. But once we put it out there, we, we want them to have back. But once we put it out there, we want them to have access, we could do something else. That's why we kinda have different issues than that, but-
Okay, I'm sorry, did somebody else have their hand up that I missed? Okay, the, then on the cultural, we know that the Lifestyle Center has all this contractual stuff around it. The cultural center doesn't have that same level.
I don't believe there's any contractual agreement.
But there, there's no developer, there's no person in there that we've agreed to do something with that money with.
Not to this, not to this point.
It was an agreement on the, on the whole project that it would be good, whatever things they brainstormed, it would be good if we had this-
It's an authorization waiting for a proposal.
Whatever, but there's no developer in the middle of that. Okay.
Option two, and option three is very closely related to this one, but option two is to reduce the sales tax apportionment substantially, in this case to five percent. So all of the project authorizations remain in place, all of the current funding levels remain in place. But the sales tax apportionment, instead of being based on sixty percent, would go to five percent. And we would assume that the transfer adjustment and average annualized growth rate adjustments would be done away with at the same time we reduced the apportionment rate. We would assume that the property tax rate would remain the same, fifty fifty. In that way, the public schools keep their multiplier benefit. If we were to do that, the general fund and the capital fund would increase by about three point six million dollars per year based on our apportionment level of last year. Some of the authorized projects would have to be slowed down potentially, though, because we may not be collecting enough money fast enough if some projects came forward. So we might have to issue some debt if council wanted to do a project, and we didn't have the money on hand, we might have to issue some debt to move it forward.
So suddenly, somebody comes up with this amazing idea for the Lifestyle Center, all of a sudden.
And they won eight million dollars. We, we may not have eight million dollars in the bank right then to do it.
We got ten million.
Right now.
Eleven million after next month.
Yeah, three hundred thousand, Councilmember Wilson.
So what kind of approval process does this take, just council approval?
No, this, any of these changes that we're talking about here would have to go through the statutory review process, and as Jeff has said, they make a recommendation on whatever their proposal is to them, and then council by a simple majority vote can approve their recommendation, or by a supermajority vote can override their recommendation.
But it does not change their distribution.
It would not change their distribution.
Councilmember Scott.
So on the option one, it was a two and a half year period that we would have paid it off, or, oh, yeah. So if the, if the developer doesn't do the Lifestyle Project within that two and a half year period, we get that eight million back. If we were to reapportion, this is till 2028?
Yeah, we're assuming-
So would they have that long to build the, or would it still be within that two and a half year?
The obligations that are outstanding right now would remain in place. So I think they have until 2023 right now, before the clawback provisions go into place.
If that could be extended to 2026 if the design is walkable, so that's just a contractual-
Would that be something that's included in, if we were to choose option two, is that something that we would send to the statutory review committee? Is say, we wanna extend this timeline until twenty-
Walkable design?
Yeah.
No, I don't think that would have to go to-
The walkable design is already in one of the development agreements, the Development Agreement Five A, the Amendment Development Agreement Number Five. So that provides for the developer, if they have a Lifestyle Center proposal, they have until 2023 to bring it forward and to complete it, actually.
To complete it? And if they don't, then we get the clawback?
That's right.
Eight million?
That's right. But if their design is walkable, then they get an extra three years up to 2026.
And that's already been agreed upon?
Right, so that's already in place.
They have to have something, and right now, they don't have to. So, I mean, they would have to have, they would have to have a master plan saying, this is what we are going to do, and it's going to be done within this period of time. That would be the only reason you would approve extending it at all.
Councilmember Wilson.
So if we were to reduce the sales tax down to five percent and, or ten percent, whichever one of these two options, and a viable Lifestyle Center came about, we would have to issue debt. Does that debt under, where does that debt fall?
Probably be under the Norman TIF authority.
Oh, it's under the Norman TIF.
It would be very similar to the 2013 notes that were just paid off.
Just obligating those revenues to-
Yes.
Councilmember-
I just wanna say on the debt issuance, it really depends on the timing of the projects. You know, if you had a Lifestyle Center that came on, or actually someone that met the regional draw retail criteria that came on, say, in the next six months. We'll tell you, I had breakfast with the site selector about a month ago, that there's a major retailer, regional draw retailer, that is looking at some sites in the metro area. Two of the top three are in Norman. So if that moved that quickly, then that money may need to be available fairly quickly. If you move forward with reallocating the cultural facility money for another use, and that moved forward quickly, and then, well, we have about eleven million in the bank now, so it's all a timing issue. If those things were spread out longer, then as you continue to accumulate at three or four million a year, then you still may not have that in that issuance. So it's truly a timing thing.
So you're saying that a retail center could be a Lifestyle Center, is that what I'm hearing?
It was always envisioned that the Lifestyle Center would be a-
The idea was kind of, and I, I think that I've finally gotten this, because this has been really hard for me to envision a Lifestyle Center. I mean, I thought that it was gonna be workout, yoga, I, you know, I really wasn't sure what it was gonna be. But I kind of envision it like Scottsdale, Arizona, where you have all these little, very nice, they're not, they're not strip malls, they're, they're small malls that are walkable, and they have plazas, and they have fountains, and they have really nice little coffee shops. And so, so it's a very pleasant area to be in. So when they were talking about walkable, they weren't talking about necessarily walkable the whole area of the south part of the U and P. They were talking about a shopping area that would be very attractive and walkable. And in a number of larger cities, that's, you have that kind of thing. They're not being built as much now as, as they were ten years ago or fifteen years ago.
In 2006, the example that was being discussed was Utica Square in Tulsa, for example. But there's one in Frisco, Texas, there's one in South Lake, Texas. I mean, there's, there's several examples of-
Are those paradigms shifting with the retail changes?
I think that's the issue that the developer has faced, yeah.
Fancy mall.
Yeah.
So basically-
Small, outdoors.
So basically, that was, after all, so this would extend it if you use the five percent, about ten years, to an F base. So, and that would allow Norman Public Schools ten years of additional financing.
And just understand that that was at the heart of the discussion of the Finance Committee, or at least some members of the Finance Committee. But just to, to extend the life while you're reducing the sales tax apportionment, but allowing the property tax to continue.
Or you could take second things out and pay it off sooner.
I'm just gonna be, I'm gonna be a man about this. Can you do like a trifecta, where you like, you reduce the, to five percent, and I'm just throwing this out there, because I'm a creative thinker, you eliminate the Lifestyle Center, and you make a senior center, a cultural center? Can we, I mean, I love it, let's do it.
Number two. I think you could add a cultural-
That's option four or five.
I think that's option eight.
Sorry, I didn't do my homework.
Councilmember Scott.
When it says Norman Public Schools loses the multiplier benefit, what, can you just explain that a little bit?
No, if we do two, or, not, not if we continue the TIF, they, they get the same effect.
I think she wants to, I think she wants to explain what the benefit is.
Yeah, it says Norman Public Schools lose multiplier benefit when property tax apportionment ends. Oh, okay, so, so if we do option two or three, they don't lose anything immediately?
It would continue the TIF on for whatever period of time it is.
During the period of the TIF, as long as there's a TIF out there, whether it's two and a half years, option one, or ten years, then Norman Public Schools is to benefit-
Okay.
By the multiplier effect.
That's confusing to me, that language, that's all.
But is it clear to you now?
Yeah, yeah, I'm on board.
Okay, Councilmember-
At the end of the period.
Gotcha.
So on these options, two, three, and four, that are sort of restructuring the sales tax piece of this, and would result in more funds going to the city's general fund and capital fund, what, what has, what has been the discussion about what those funds would be spent on? What would be our budgetary plan for the use of those funds? I mean, I'm just cautious to, I don't even know if the statutory committee would support numbers two, three, and four to do the reapportionment. But looking down the barrel of an upcoming utility vote on stormwater, and knowing that one issue that we've heard last go-around was that this is, you know, gonna be a slush fund for the general fund, or is this something that's really needed? I have concerns that taking action on this in the short term could have a negative impact on the stormwater utility vote, because if we just put three point six million dollars into the general fund, I, seems to me, a logical question is gonna come up in the community, is why do we need a stormwater utility now? Now, I mean, I'm not saying that may or may not be a good thing, I'm just putting that out there as I think it's something we need to be aware of.
That's a very valid point.
And we need to have a plan for what we're gonna do with that money. If we don't have a plan, then maybe we just, it goes to the stormwater, and we don't have a utility, I don't know.
Yeah, that was discussed previously. And I can't speak to what someone may think, but I would just draw council's attention back to those mega trends that we talked about. And remember that the general fund does not have a slush fund. The general fund is spending more money than it's taking in each year right now. So I would, I would suggest that the first thing that this new money would do is to get the general fund back to square zero, basically, where you're not drawing down fund balance, you're, you're paying for things that you're, that you're currently doing.
I guess my comment, yeah, no, I'm sorry, go ahead, Anthony.
Now, if you wanted to add some things, yes, you could. But again, in the long term, where the general fund is right now is that it's declining on an annual basis, and this slows that rate of decline. I would also remind council about the megatrend of the public safety sales tax expenses coming into the general fund. The problem that the general fund has now is going to be worse in the future when the general fund takes over the expenses of the public safety sales tax, which does not cover its expenses. We need to improve the status of the general fund, and this is one step towards doing that. We've talked about this before, but I would just remind council those things.
And I, and I understand everything you're saying, Anthony. I'm just saying to the average voter, it needs to be, we need to have this coupled, if we do options two, three, or four, in, in my opinion, coupled with the executive memo, the talking points, whatever it is, because if the article in the transcript is, council reapportion's an influx of three point six million dollars in the general fund, and then we ask the public next fall, or next spring, for four million dollars for a utility, we need to be out in front of that message, and we need to have a, be prepared to answer the question of what the three point six million dollars is gonna be spent on, what it's gonna be used for, you know, and therefore delay the foundation for why we still need a stormwater utility. Or I think that we're, we're not helping ourselves necessarily, and, and I think we all agree that the stormwater utility is important.
Let me say something first, to that. Because that is our job as city council. That is our job to make sure that we are educating the public about our financial status. And the fact that, and that's why almost every meeting that I go to, I say to people, if, we can't do, we can't do one or the other. We have to do both of these things. We either have to change the TIF, end the TIF, expand the TIF, we have to do something with the TIF, and we have to do something with stormwater. It's been that way ever since I've been on council. We have not done our job of educating folks, the residents. This is not rocket science. The fact is, if you look at what our general fund balance is doing every single year, we're not keeping up with inflation. We cannot add one single more person to our staff, and we all know we need more people on our staff. We cannot add one more person, and our personnel costs are gonna go up fifteen percent, twenty percent?
That's the problem with the public safety sales tax.
And that's the problem with the public safety sales tax, because almost all of our big expenses are employees. And so we need to do something with this, and we need to do the stormwater, because stormwater costs are also going up. I remember Mac asking this question in one of the meetings we had about stormwater before we started the open houses, and, and I, I just think that that's what our job is, to get out there and, and explain. And you're absolutely right, we need, we need good talking points. Councilmember Wilson, I'm sorry.
I think that it's important that we are good stewards of the funds that are being given to us. And right now, apportioning the amount that we are currently apportioning is not being good stewards. I think it is also very difficult for us to go talk to people in the community about, hey, we're gonna build a Lifestyle or a Cultural Center, but, you know, we haven't taken care of our crumbling infrastructure in a hundred years. So I think that beyond educating the public, I think we need to actually make good, sound financial decisions. I think that if it were up to me all by myself, I would end the TIF. My hesitation is with the school system, I would hate to pull that rug out from underneath them, but I have a hard time talking to my voters, my constituents, about how we need a stormwater, and how you need to pay for this, and then we have the sales tax going over here into this fun, fun fund that I, you know. So I, I actually would like, you know, my, my thought would be to end it, but I was part of the Finance Committee that sat and said, well, we don't wanna do that, so here's some other options.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Cassbury, and then Scott.
Before we made our, when we went into our original budget vote, the original budget presented to us was two point six million dollars in hold. We've got six hundred thousand dollars in spending, get down to our two million dollar current deficit. I'm sorry, two million dollars, we're two million dollars, not two point six, we're two million dollars, we've got six hundred thousand, we're a million and four and a half. So two million of that is just to get us back to doing the things that we wanted to do, but nothing new. That was, you know, we custom positioned us, so we easily have two or three million dollars that we can spend to just maintain our level of service. And so that's one of the reasons why we want to, there's no point in putting all this money, keep putting it into the TIF, if we're not gonna do additional projects, other than with, we'll, we'll have this two and a half years. So, and then Norman Public Schools loses about six hundred thousand dollars a year. We can, now, you can say, well, it's fine, we'll just take this extra money that we have, and we'll give it to them. Okay, but that's another six hundred thousand dollars we don't have. So why would we take six hundred thousand dollars out of our funds when we can get multiplier effect from the state? This is no different than why we go eighty, twenty with the feds on roads. Why would we pay for the entire road when we can leverage this fund? This allows us to leverage the AdVorum taxes that come to Norman Public Schools, but also allows us to balance our budget and give a little more time in there. So I think, and I think people understand that, you know, we are, now we're providing services, we've got our budget in, in place, we're not putting a whole bunch of money into the TIF, but we're meeting our obligations that we've got out there, and we're protecting Norman Public Schools. Now, I don't know that the taxing authority, you know, are gonna see it the same way. I mean, that's, they, they have a, we're Norman Public Schools, they're gonna support this, but the county, whether they're gonna say a fifty fifty, that's another discussion I think we have to have. But even ending the TIF, I don't think is, well, I'm, I'm against the TIF, because I'm not gonna, I personally am not gonna cast a vote that cuts any money for Norman Public Schools. that cuts any money from Norman Public Schools. You can say that it's a rounding error, it's only $600,000, or $100 million, only 1%, $600,000, or $800,000 is $600,000. That's the SRO program, that's 15 positions. That is a real cut, that is not, we'll cut back on office supplies. I mean, those are huge cuts, and I, I, I'm personally, I'm not going to sit there and have my little picture says, I support teachers, and then personally make a vote that cuts that money from Norman Public Schools. We can make all the money we want to, the legislators are up there for doing it. But when it comes to us doing it, I'm not doing it. When I have an option, I don't have to do that. I can keep them whole, I can meet my current general fund obligations, and we can put some more money in there. So that's why, whether it's 5% or 10%, I think we can't keep, there's no point in placing the current level we're in there. We don't need to put $4 million a year in there. And so whatever level we're going to cut back here, I, I think is, is, is what we talked about finance committee, why we want to do this. Allows us to meet our obligations. If it does come back in, when it ends, we'll get the money back. We'll get a portion of it. I mean, we're not going to get 100% of it back, but the, the warm's aren't going to get 100% of either. So there's going to be some type of portion in there. We're not losing this money. We're deferring it. If it doesn't happen, I mean, I hate to say this, but the greatest thing in the world would be if the Lifestyle Center didn't happen. Because you know what? Now we're going to get $8 million bucks from the developer. You keep us alive, you got potential to get $8 million that we never had. I suppose if you end it, you'll, you have no chance of getting it if you end it. You do have a chance of getting a lawsuit. Or we have to come up with a general fund to pay for, and we'd have to come up somewhere else. I mean, just because if we don't have the TIF, we, we still have contractual obligation to do the Lifestyle Center. We just have to come up with capital fund or general fund. They don't say, we don't care what fund it comes from. You guys agreed to this, we brought a plan forward, so you need to come up with money. The TIF does, it segregates that money out there so that we don't spend on something else. You know, or I'd also look at, one of the next options we talked about is adding a project. I've, I've got no problem whatsoever adding the senior center on here and using that. But I know this was options that come down here, but that's an additional project. That was the emphasis between, you know.
Yeah, that would take more years.
Those are the boxes we were trying to check. Balance the general fund, check. Make Norman Public Schools, check. Meet our finance, meet our legal obligations, check. Don't lose that call back. Hold the developer responsible for what they did, check.
Councilmember Scott.
Uh, I think, just to kind of back up to what Bill said about the stormwater utility and people, you know, the perception being that if we reapportion, or even if we were to end the TIF, all of this money is going to go back into the general fund. And I think it still has, doesn't it? That's how it would work. And so, um, so we'd still have that same perception that we can just one-off, you know, pay for the stormwater utility. But I think that, you know, no matter what the transcript writes, or what, how it's done, or how it's apportioned, it, there needs to be made a clear difference between, you know, this is a one-time thing versus an ongoing maintenance and utility. And it's, like you said, it's our responsibility to educate. So I think that is really at the core of that argument, you know, for perspect, for public perception, whatever we choose to do. Even though this money is going into the general fund, that's not what it's for. The stormwater utility should be completely separate because of the ongoing implications year after year after year.
Yeah, and, and Councilmember Castleberry made some really good points about, it's not like we've got extra money right now. We've got extra obligations, and we've cut things. So I, I, I don't think it would take too long to sit down and say, here's what this money, and, and we've been concerned about our reserves. And so we could make our reserves a little better, bigger. So, all right, Councilmember Hickman.
I don't want to belabor this point, but it's kind of like the Stormwater Committee is going through in detail what the money that is going to be raised is going to be spent on. And Sean and his team have come up with what those dollars are going to represent, because we learned from that vote that people wanted to know. I just think that if we're going to do options two, three, or four, which is going to put more money back into the general fund through reallocation of some sort, we need to be prepared to say, what are we going to do with those extra dollars? Right now, if we do the reserve policy change that the finance committee also talked about, and changes those percentages, it's only about, you know, three quarters of a million dollars, $700,000 or so, that the budget is technically upside down. But that's only really a part because those are monies that are pre-authorized for the manager to spend in the event of emergencies. They're not things that we need money, we're not technically drawing down the fund balance unless we go over budget or we have an emergency. So, you know, in theory, $3.6 million is, one could say, new dollars to spend on new services, or expanding services, or hiring personnel that maybe need to be hired. My point is just that the people in this room know a lot more than the average person that goes out there and votes. And us, nine members of council who are volunteers elected, can educate the thousands of people who vote in the community. I mean, that's not realistic, in my opinion. And so, you know, I think that it needs to be, whatever, if we do two, three, or four, we need to have, and I'd like to have a list. You know, we've got 14 unfunded positions. I think last time I asked the city manager, maybe that was from last fiscal year, and those were about $1 million a year to fund those positions. Not saying that's what we should do, but I think we need to look at it from that perspective. You know, if we're going to do something like this, and $3.6 million goes back to that, I've made the comment to people, something I think is worth looking at, is maybe we allocate a percentage of those funds that go to a Norman Economic Development Authority so that we can have an entity that we can then utilize to do economic development things across our community, and try to bring quality jobs here. I just worry that if all that money gets dumped into the general fund, A, affects stormwater utility, and B, it gets lost in the general fund and, you know, versus if there are things that, you know, and the transportation issue.
I totally, I, I agree, I agree with you initially.
Well, that's just my concern about going from a two, three, or four right now, is we don't have a plan.
I know, but we have a number of things we know that we need. All I said was, I believe that it wouldn't take us that long to sit down and list line by line by line by line exactly what we need to do. And we need to have that discussion in finance committee. We need to have it with the whole council. What things, if we free up $3.6 million, what, what are the things you absolutely want to see in there? Is that part of our solution to the $164,000 for card access? No, I don't know, but I, I agree, yes.
One thing I would point out is if, if you pull up the finance committee meeting from last August, agenda item number one, there's a list in there of $2.4 million of cuts that are proposed to balance this year's budget. You want to know where the money's going to go? You do not cut these things. We have a list right there. This is what we would not do.
We don't have $2.4 million if things need to be cut though.
That's, that's the things that would be recommended to cut in order to meet this year's budget. That's for $2.4 million in hold.
How are we $2.4 million in hold?
We budgeted, we budgeted $2.4 million to a loss.
Well, $1.8 million of that, $1.4 million of that was the emergency funds that would be necessary only if there was an emergency.
Councilmember, I'm telling you, this, these are the estimated reductions. If you wanted to list, the managers give us a list of, these are the potential areas that we could cut.
Well, those aren't, those are potential things that might be cut. That doesn't mean that that's where we're going to spend money on, the budget.
You asked for a list of items.
Councilmember Scott.
Okay, so we're only on option two. And, um, I'm just wondering when, if we make a decision, when the changes would begin to take place.
If, if we made a decision that we were going to change the allocation, if we made that decision, or we were going to change the allocation and take out the Cultural Center money, or whatever, we could make those decisions fairly quickly. And then it would require me reconvening the statutory review committee and saying, here's what our council has proposed that we do. It will not change your status, it will lengthen the time, if we do all of the projects, it will lengthen the time that it takes to pay them all off. So that, that could all happen fairly soon.
Well, what I'm wondering is when.
And it would be real helpful if we could get that money into the general.
That's what I'm asking, is when the money would go back into the general fund? Like, what is an ETA? Like, you know, we do, we decide what we want to, which option we want to go with tonight, and then it goes to statutory review committee. And then what, we vote on it again during a council meeting to approve it? And then at what point does it, does the money begin to go back into the general?
Let's ask.
The project plan is an ordinance. So if at the time council has said, here's the option we want to propose to the statutory review committee, you do that as a resolution at any council meeting, goes to the statutory review committee, and the mayor, she says, has to convene them. Let's say that it takes them a month to do their meetings and come back with their recommendation to the council. So a month after that, then, the council is going to have a first reading on whatever ordinance the council wants to do to make the changes. Next meeting, that'd be the final consideration of that ordinance. 30 days later, it will go into effect. So the minimum amount of time would be about 90 days. And the, and as soon as the ordinance goes into effect, if you have voted to change the apportionment rate, that new apportionment rate would be in effect.
Then like boom, December, we see this money going back into the general fund. Okay, let's, thank you.
Ideal, perfect.
Right.
So option three is very similar to option two, so I won't go into much detail except to say that the apportionment rate change would be from 60% to 10% instead of 5%. And the money going to the general fund would increase by about 3.2 million instead of 3.6 million. And it would be about 2027 when the, all of the authorized projects that would have been remaining in place would be fully funded. Part of the finesse committee's discussion was that instead of having this percentage, why don't we just apportion a fixed amount to the TIF fund each year out of the capital fund and the general fund? And that's one thing you could do. And, and again, it's totally up to council what that amount is. Is it $4 million per year? Is it something less than that? If so, is it a million? Is it $500,000, whatever it may be? And then based on that amount, we'd be able to calculate how long it would be for all of the remaining authorized projects are fully funded. So again, this is, you know, for you to discuss and, and determine if this is the way you want to go, and if so, what that fixed dollar amount might be.
And so the purpose of that would just be to keep us, we, we would be able to count on how much money, and it wouldn't fluctuate if there was a real dip in sales tax collection or a real.
And, and by the, yeah, just understand that you would assume that business in University North Park is going to continue to grow. So if you have any, any apportionment rate that's based on a percentage, it's going to go up over time. Whereas if you did it this way, it's a fixed amount.
And all the growth would stay in the general fund.
And all the growth would stay in the general fund.
Okay, yeah, so it can.
We said, we're going to put $400,000 a year in there, that's it. Then we say, we've got $4 million to collect, it's going to take us 10 months or whatever. I mean, it'd be simple math as opposed to, well, it's $400,000 a year, plus it's going to grow at 2.5%, so it's $410,000 next year. So I mean, we would know exactly what it is, maybe it would make budgeting a little bit easier. And we would know, you will make sure that, you have to assume that if you say three, if you say $3 million, and the TIF only generates $2.9 million, you have to come up with a grant for it. So it's got to be a very doable number. And that's why it's going to be the 5%, you know. We say we're going to put $400,000, $500,000 there, and we know we're going to put $400,000, $500,000. We're going to $4 million now.
Or a percentage.
Yeah, so if we fell from $4 million a year to $500,000 a year to TIF, we'd have much bigger problems to worry about than this allocation.
That means some major University North Park businesses have gone out of business.
That means the city's probably out of business, because I, I mean, unless, it could be just that area, yes. But if you have that big a drop in sales tax, it's probably a citywide issue.
Something bad, doesn't it?
There's something really bad happening.
Like a serious recession.
We had it in, it was like 2008.
We still didn't have that much problem.
Even in 2008, the TIF kept growing.
Right. So it'd be very, very unlikely. Very unlikely. You have a very low percentage, closer to that 5%, 10%.
I'm ready.
Okay, so options five through eight are proposing to, to eliminate some projects. And before we embark on that discussion, there's just some things that in any of these proposals to keep in mind. You've had a lot of discussion about those contractual obligations that exist, particularly for the Lifestyle Center cost project. But just know that if you eliminate projects, then there's going to have to be some renegotiation of, of some existing development agreements. And once you've chosen which of these things you might want to do, then we'll get into it and, and see what needs to be renegotiated and how, and how we want to do it. The economic development authorization, remember, is, what's supposed to be happening is that University North Park TIF and the NEDC has invested in buying this land in University North Park for the University North Park Cultural Center. And they are going to resell that land that they have purchased and installed the infrastructure. And as those resales happen, that money comes back to the NEDC for other future projects and developments in the University North Park area. So it, it was always envisioned that that revolving fund, for lack of a better term, would outlive the TIF. That, that they'd be selling that land, and they'd have that money on hand, and just have that in your mind, that, that process would still be in place. The, the bid.
And the money for the economic development has already been paid out. The majority, it was $4 million.
The majority of, the land purchase has been done, the infrastructure has been done. There is some existing NEDC debt to pay for that land purchase. And so it was always envisioned that they'd sell enough of that land off to pay that debt.
That's what allowed us to have, to get ME out there, was that land.
Anthony, would you clarify, we talked about ending the TIF. Once the TIF has got its money, it, it doesn't necessarily end, it just stops collecting money.
Stops apportioning sales tax.
Wherever money is still in there, goes towards project plan.
The example that I would give is, is the campus corner TIF. Okay, the campus corner TIF through its sales tax apportionment, and it was only $1.25 million. But it generated that $1.25 million in about four years. But it took about nine years for all of the projects to be completed. So, yeah, ending the TIF, to me, is stopping the apportionment of property tax and sales tax. But the life of the projects is the life of the projects. I can, you know, Sean is, you know, there was this like $23,000 sitting out there, and I was like, Sean, come up with the project, spend the money, you know? But it was years before we actually closed out that TIF fund. The Business Improvement District would continue. We're, we are, you'll recall that we just approved the assessment role for next year for, for the Business Improvement District. That would continue, assuming that it was reestablished at the end of its 10-year life. That could outlive the University North Park TIF fund. The funding for the Robinson and I-35 West Frontage Road project is in the budget now. That project, if you ended the TIF today, we would assume that those funds would stay set aside to complete that project. And that's something the council has identified as a big deal.
Yes, they would.
Anyone that lives west of.
I'm not interested in this, we might have to, what are you going to give us?
I'll give you a trainee.
Start with me.
Okay, so let's talk about what the finesse committee talked about of, of eliminating some projects. One of them was eliminating the Lifestyle Center project that you talked about here. It's $8.25 million. All of the other projects will remain in place under this option. The sales tax and property tax apportionments would remain the same. Instead of having 25 or so million dollars left to be generated, we'd have about $16.8 million left to be generated. Based on our current rate of apportionment, it would take us about a year to generate that money. If you eliminated this particular project, we'd have all of the money in place to fund all of the remaining authorized projects in about a year. There would still be, there would need to be some renegotiation of outstanding, I see some quizzical looks on people's faces.
Well, if you're doing $4 million a year in the TIF, and you got $11 million, that's 15 million. So that's not about a year, that's 17 million if they're yearly. 15 million so that's not about a year that's 17 million if they're yearly a year and a half or so.
Well remember it's a year from now.
It's wrong.
Yeah right. The Norman Public Schools multiplier benefit would end when the property tax apportionment been in so that'd be about a year year and a half from now any questions on that one?
We we kind of discussed that and as we've been discussing all the the rest and we've talked about what the issues would be with the Lifestyle Center because of the contractual obligations and and that kind of thing so we we kind of have discussed that as part of our earlier discussion council member Bearman.
So Anthony this this estimate of give or take here would be at the same apportionment level however so if we were to let's say eliminate the Lifestyle Center and also drop the apportionment down to 5% or to some fixed number that would.
It would extend it out.
Extend that time okay do you have any idea if we drop it to 5% with that one?
Once once council has chosen an option then we get to work on okay based on that chosen option where are we how long is it going to take to to generate the funds to pay for all of the remaining authorized projects that you've now changed but no we didn't try to mess around with.
You didn't you didn't bundle options for me come on.
I would draw your attention to 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 this part of the discussion here because if you have eliminated the Lifestyle Center project just remember that there may still be some developer that comes forward with a great idea for regional draw retail project and we just wouldn't have this money setting aside to do it so there would be some other ways to do it though you could take money out of the capital fund to build infrastructure to support their proposed development you could enter into a contractual agreement with that new developer for a sales tax rebate of the sales taxes generated by their project there's other ways to skin the cat than just University North Park TIF so just understand that.
But we would lose that as an we would lose that as an.
You would lose this as an option.
And I'm assuming we don't have.
I've got to have a better you know if I can't skin a cat what's a better way to say it.
I don't know.
If we don't have the incentive out there then we really can't hold the developer.
The clawback.
The clawback would go away too I mean we're not going to run into our end and we can't hold their end right?
That's one of the things would have to be renegotiated.
Potential clawback that's a trade off.
That's only if we eliminate the Lifestyle Center though not the Cultural Center because the Cultural Center is the one that doesn't have.
Yeah the clawback agreements are not related to the Cultural Center.
Only to the Lifestyle Center.
To the Lifestyle Center.
You spent the money on Legacy Park to attract Lifestyle Center that was going to be part of it so we'll spend my own park if you have an area to put your Lifestyle Center in but if you don't do your Lifestyle Center we want our money back we're a Cultural Center we have a Cultural Center we haven't done anything.
Who determines who determines if that Lifestyle Center is a great idea if somebody comes to us with an idea we determine that?
Yeah there are some some things that the proposal has to meet to meet sales per square foot and that sort of thing but as far as if it is a good enough project yeah that's that's council's call.
Okay but Mr. Bryant do you want to weigh in on this?
Kind of mixing a couple of things I just want to make sure we have some clarity here there's really two parts of that development agreement it was a carrot part and a stick part the carrot part was the 8.25 million which is the incentive money so if you come and do the Lifestyle Center and you meet the the approval of council and how this Lifestyle Center is going to come forward and yes it's council's call on that then they could potentially get that 8.25 million as a carrot the stick part though is the penalties so they have to do a certain level of retail to avoid paying those penalties and those penalties were tied to two things one was the frontage road extension that was about 2.4 million cost and the other was the legacy part construction so about 5.9 million so that was all defined in the development agreement that those numbers together that's how you get the 8.3 that's the penalty and they only have to pay the penalty if they don't achieve at least 250,000 square feet of retail space in that Lifestyle Center area before the TIF's over.
What's the definition of retail?
It's a good question it used to be a lot lower it was like 175 dollars per square foot for a certain size store and I think it's maybe 100 for another size store in one of the more recent development agreements we increased those performance criteria so it was like 300 dollars per square foot for a certain size store and I think I mean with that Catherine maybe 200 400 for maybe the smaller size so we increased that.
And it excluded categories of retail or what defines retail?
Sales tax generated.
Did not exclude.
How much money you think makes per square foot?
We could change it.
Could not be within well it used to be within a 21 mile radius couldn't be within a 21 mile radius couldn't be a store that relocated from Norman to qualify and we modified that so when we approved the council modifying that when they approved the amendment to build the agreement five so it has to be a regional draw type store it can't be within 21 mile radius of Norman or it can't have been in Norman and when council modified that before they were looking at what was happening at Moore and they said okay that's more than 21 miles but if we have a store that might help stop some of the leakage from Norman as long as they weren't already in Norman they still might qualify if they meet the criteria so that was just the progression of our council was modifying that.
Council member.
Just to clarify if we if we wanted to if we just really badly wanted the Lifestyle Center to be built right now we could lower the threshold for what we consider high-end retail lower the percentage for or square foot retail if we wanted to say we just want to allow anything to go in we just want it built we don't even care we could do that?
It would require an amendment to the development agreement because all that criteria is in the.
I mean it wouldn't meet the spirit of what it was about anyway.
Probably wouldn't meet the spirit of it I'm sure the retailer the developer would not object because it's easier for them.
Yeah they could get anybody to accomplish it.
Now on the 250,000 square feet remember when Crest came in there was a developer asked for some credit for Crest as it met that sales criteria and so they got credit for about 104,000 I believe is what it is of retail space off that 250 so the amount that they have to finish is about 145,000 square feet somewhere in that range and once they finish that then they're not subject to the clawback provision and so I mentioned that because of what I mentioned earlier that there is a potential regional draw retailer that will meet that criteria that is looking for a location in the south part of Oklahoma City and of the top three sites two of those are in Norman one of those is in the TIF area so that may accomplish that they may go to another center as far as Norman is concerned we don't care if they go to the TIF or somewhere else just so they go in Norman because we want the sales tax so so stay tuned you may get some information about that soon.
Yeah council members cause.
So it couldn't be one of those like super neat shipping container shopping centers shipping container have you seen those?
If it made that much if it made $400 per square foot.
Yeah I mean they do no not the Container Store no.
There's some architectural review board design criteria for everything.
Oh okay.
So to meet that design criteria it's not likely.
Okay unless we made a development amendment.
We'd have to do that.
Okay those are cool just saying.
One of those downtown.
Okay. Option six is the elimination of the Cultural Center project again it assumes that all of the apportionment rates remain the same this project is 8.75 million dollars of authorization and again when we say authorization just remember that that doesn't mean you have to spend 8.75 million dollars you could spend 5 million of that and keep 3 million 750 available if we were to do this one we would then have about 16.3 million dollars of remaining authorization we have the downside of having more difficulty if you want to have a regional draw cultural center we wouldn't have that money set aside to incentivize it Norman Public Schools would lose their multiplier benefit in a little less than a year about the end of this fiscal year and and then the money would go back to the general funds capital fund and to the property tax and jurisdictions I would point out that this would also sacrifice the ability for council to do option nine. Option seven is the combination of the Lifestyle Center and Cultural Center projects and this was specifically discussed again at the finance committee meeting this will reduce the authorization by 17 million dollars in total 8.75 plus 8.25 million the sales and property tax apportionments could then be repealed because we would have enough money on hand right now to pay for all of the projects that were remaining authorized this however will reduce our ability to to attract that regional draw retailers and it would reduce our ability to pay for the cultural facility or to do option nine which is using the cultural center money to pay for a senior center in the University North Park area it wouldn't require some renegotiation of those contracts and Norman Public Schools would lose the multiplier benefit right away so option eight is just you know council could do some combinations of all of those things this is what council member Wilson was talking about earlier and and we're totally you know just open book to what you might choose to do and once you have chosen what you want to do we'll get to work on on all of these thick things that that would be involved in that.
Council member.
So what if instead of just instead of reducing the sales tax to 5 or 10% or whatever what if we just reduced the sales tax to zero but the property just remained the same if if Norman Public Schools in the county and PLS wanted to remain in there I mean I would think if they want to remain in the TIF I don't think we should end it for them if we don't want to take ourselves out we can.
That's an option they would never go for that.
Well I'm just saying yeah I agree why would they want to yeah.
I mean they're I mean I think.
But Norman Public Schools would keep their thing.
We had we had a deal.
Sure.
And we want to do the deal if you guys are pulling out then we're pulling out.
Then like Norman Public Schools would argue that we want to stay in because we want to keep getting that money right.
I can't see I can't see the more Norman or county saying listen if you guys are pulling out we're pulling out in fact we may even pull out a Center City TIF if you guys are going to do that stuff to us.
Right.
I mean they would have that option of.
I'm not sure how they would be able to pull off Center City but.
They could just stop paying for it I mean they could.
Well I mean you you could get yourself we could get ourselves into some kind of lawsuit I'm sure that's always possible but.
I don't know how changing it from whatever it is now to 10% or 0% is any different if it's talking about changing the deal I mean that's why.
It is but they're going zero that's totally not but anything in.
Well still changing the deal not changing the deal is leaving it as is option one and letting it fully fund in two and a half years and and then the Norman Public Schools multiplier protection thing goes away I mean so you're talking about protecting the schools you're really talking about two and a half years till December 2020 you know I I mean if we're going to do a reapportion I'm not I'm certainly not opposed to making it zero because in part to me we would be doing that for the benefit of the taxing partners as opposed to ending it early because you know I think that the committee would prefer to see us end the TIF early.
I just don't want to make the decision for those other taxing jurisdictions if they want to remain in that TIF then their elective bodies should make a decision or not I but if we decide we want to get out.
I'm not sure they can.
Well they could say okay our board decided council we want you to take us out you know that type of thing but if they wanted to stay in.
We recommend I mean we know from the we know.
Recommend we want you to stay in.
Yeah we know from the resolution we sent them about the culture facility on the senior center they can send back to us whatever recommendation they want I mean they've done in the past so it doesn't matter really what we saying and what we send to them they're going to send back to us whatever they want because that's you know at least my experience the time I've been on council so I'm in a way we've spent a lot of time talking about these 10 options and I'm not sure how much it totally matters what we end up saying and sending them because they're going to send back to us whatever they choose to send back to us and so.
But we can we can override what they do but the idea is to try to work together with them to get something that is appealing I've had loose discussions with them conceptually about this you know 5 10 50% just the idea of if we cut back our sales tax portion what do you think about that you know of course Norman Public Schools is we we want we need some time don't pull the rug out from under us in a year if you're going to do this give us two or three years give us a runway so we can budget you know ideally they'd like a little more time to come in there of course their best is like well we want to see the area developed we went from zero property taxes on raw land we want to see it develop that's why we got into in the first place was to see it fully developed and if it's not going to fully develop then we'd like to see it develop as much as possible to get maybe some of the bigger deal of that I mean that's what they're looking at is you know the add warm part of it too.
There are some real advantages in in the sense that we could go ahead and do something to help our general fund in the next few months that that is a real advantage if there's the advantage like council member Cass Perry has said about the school system it helps the school system there is an advantage in not getting into a protracted contractual discussion with the developers on the Lifestyle Center if I mean not that that we couldn't work on that because we could but I that will take some time so it seems like that the advantages we can still make a decision about the cultural center money it seems like the advantages of us at least keeping the TIF open for a few more years there's quite a few advantages to that and not a whole lot of disadvantages to it because at any time we could say okay these guys we're never going to get a lifestyle that's never going to happen so let's end it and we may want to be having those discussions with them but I just see there's some advantages to this.
Option nine you've already discussed this is basically using the cultural center project authorization for the senior center in the UMP project area now remember option nine and option 10 were not actually discussed at the finance committee but these are options that remain on the table because there's things that you've already talked about you've already passed a resolution related to this one you passed a resolution this was council's recommendation the statutory review committee came back with their recommendation they didn't like what council said but you could still do it okay you could vote to override what the statutory review committee recommended you'd basically be using that 8.75 million dollars for a senior center in the project area and everything else remaining in place which is not a given that's what's assumed here everything else remaining in place we'd be back to about two and a half years to fully fund all the authorized projects don't believe we'd have to issue any debt because with the money that we have on hand and the apportionment rate that we have right now it's going to take some time to build that senior center so we'd be collecting enough money to do it on a pay-as-you-go basis.
Could we lower the tax and do the senior center?
That's one thing you could do basically that would be you'd be combining option two through four with option nine.
You're asking more from from the tax and jurisdiction if you do that because they're losing the capability of using that money for something that would be an investment that would grow the amount of taxes.
Well they still have the revenue to borrow they can still be able to.
Are you talking about the.
Issue debt right like if if they needed if a Lifestyle Center came along after we lowered the taxes.
Under this proposal the Lifestyle Center project would still be in place.
So they could still even though it's a slower rate of revenue they could still borrow money we still borrow money to build this fabulous Lifestyle Center.
Keep in mind for the cultural facility something like that that will be something that pays if it's in. that will be something that pays if it's in the increment area. It will be paying add warm tax. If it's in the project area, it will not.
So they're not getting anything from it?
They don't have any desire to build anything that's not in the increment area. So we, I mean.
I understand that, but I think it behooves us all as Cleveland County and as city of Norman to have a robust senior center.
But we can do a senior, if it's option 10, we can do a senior center instead of a Lifestyle Center and still keep the Lifestyle Center or take the Lifestyle Center out and put the senior center in there.
As long as it's in.
As long as it's in the project area.
On 24th Avenue.
Anyway, what they said is they don't think a senior center qualifies as a cultural center. And I have to agree, there's nothing that's going to generate outside tech for a senior center. So let's not call a senior center a cultural center. Let's just call it a senior center and add a project. In fact, their recommendation was add a project. They didn't have any problem with adding a project.
I know. And then they said, let's go put a thing over on the, on the fairgrounds. It didn't make any sense.
That was part of the original arena TIF deals. That's off the table.
Although not in the increment area.
Anyway. That was just, that was just thrown out there by one person on the statutory committee. No decision.
It's what it came back to us.
They asked the council to look at it, to consider.
Come on, Mac, you're giving it too early. Don't you want to see what we choose to do? Come on.
All right.
You've got no staying power. No staying power.
You got Newport or Holm something?
Yeah.
The weather is getting bad, so let's try to wind this up. Council member Hickman and then Holman.
I guess I go back to, I'm not sure why this is something we need to. It's early September and this is on our agenda, you know. There are still a lot of issues to me that need to be figured out. I've already talked about what we do with the 3.6 million, you know, due in allocation. And I'll just say that these options, you're involving the senior center, are very important to me. But I'm still holding my breath and praying that we get the Griffin Park lease done and we get the thing worked out with Department of Mental Health and we can use those funds to build the senior center. If that happens, then my opinion about some of these options might change because, you know, I may be more willing to say, let's take the cultural center out as a project. I'll let the thing fully fund itself in a year and work with the Norman Public Schools to give them a little more of a runway. Because I think if you want to talk about the schools or protecting the schools, there are things we could do that provide the school with more flexibility financially than they have right now with the TIF funds. Because my understanding of the TIF funds are like building funds, you know, land funds, that they're not allowed to pay teachers for. They can't use those funds to pay payroll, salaries. Versus if we, if we did things like, excuse me?
No, I don't think that's right.
That's what they told me.
Dr. Migley Arena said that pays for their SRO program.
Well, I'm not, but that's not a teacher. I said they can't use the funds to pay for teachers, staffing costs. Maybe they use it for the SRO. I don't know. My point just is there are other things that we could do as a city, which I'm sure Ken's going to love hearing this idea, but I assume they pay for water and maybe other city services. There are things, for example, that we could do to not charge them maybe for those kinds of services that would be relieved to their general fund, like our general fund, which could then be funds spent on salaries. Or I'm just saying, there are other things that we could do to give them a runway and give them some financial protection so that we aren't giving them quota budget cut in the two and a half years that are left for this thing.
But just, I mean.
So I didn't mean, so I'm kind of, I would kind of like maybe to revisit this conversation in, I don't know, 60 days or something to see what happens with Department of Mental Health, to see what happens with this site selection person. Because what I also hear Jeff saying is if these people come to town and say, yeah, they want to do this, then we may be getting a call from the developer saying, I need my 8 million dollars. At the same time, I know we have that, Robert, but we don't have the other 8 million dollars that if, for example, Department of Mental Health says, no, we're not doing that lease deal, then I think the majority of us on council say, we want to tap that 8.75 million in the next year so we don't have both sets of funds. And if we've already then sent the reapportionment discussion on to the Statutory Committee, you know, we've kind of, the boat's left the dock. And now we're looking at ourselves saying, gosh, wish you would. Maybe we don't want to cut that money because maybe now we want to get the 8.75 million and we need the 8 million and we need that money now or more quickly. And maybe we can finance it. I don't know. Maybe it's just going to cost us more money. And so there's still some things up in the air that in my mind relate to what I would feel more comfortable doing. And I guess I'm just unsure of if we're not going to end it, which is I think what a lot of people in the community want, why this is urgent to move forward with today.
I think that it was part of our discussion for finance because of, one, the change in the reserve policy that added some money back into our bottom line. And this was a second part of, here's something else we could do almost immediately to help our general fund through this year and next year when we really need that help. So.
And all signs in the TIF balance the budget. Balance the budget. This balances the budget.
Does it in the TIF though? There are two important parts of that conversation.
No arena, in the TIF, so no arena, we're in a arena. The arena, the TIF is basically frozen. You're going to meet your current obligations, so you're not, you're ended by the apportionment's going in. You've got a plan to end it. And so that's why.
Well, if we don't, if we don't do something, then we do option one, which is do nothing.
Right now, we're doing option one. That's what, that's our current path right now.
So instead, I think we should move forward with a different option.
There's $300,000 a month going into this fund that's not going to the general.
That we could be.
By 250 or 200.
I think council member Holman has been waiting.
I mean, I agree about maybe coming back to this because I think we'll know a whole lot more about some stuff in just a couple of months, a month or less or two. Know more about the land at the North Base area, know about the Griffin land. And so I think we'd have a lot more better idea about what we want to do if we come back in just a month or two even, so.
I mean, could we still do that?
I would agree with the month.
Could we still, I mean, potentially move forward today with another option and then also revisit the cultural center slash senior center when we know more about Griffin? I mean, does it?
We have a proposal to take the Statutory Review Committee.
Okay.
I mean, we can't bring multiple of them. I mean, I knew we would like to take one for them to consider and talk about and get back to us. Whenever, whenever we do go to the center, that could be.
I think that we'll know, I'm hoping that we're going to know some things within the next month and about land. And so I do think there may be some things that we could be looking at now. Maybe not. Maybe that's the next step that we have to have is to send it on to the Statutory Review Committee. But if we wait a few more weeks, we may know by the end of September and can bring it back.
We also have the OU Regents. The generation of the land swap bills, I mean, in addition to.
That's what I was saying.
That's what I'm talking about. I'm saying in September, we have the possibilities of several different dominoes falling that will help us know more what our options are. I prefer the option that you talked about, which was the Norman.
Some for not adding more and ending it in 2.5 years.
Do we, can we ask Jeff, do we have any idea of whoever's handling it? The Department of Mental Health lease discussions, do we have any idea of where you think that stands and when we might know if that's going to happen?
The mayor probably knows more. I think she had a more recent discussion.
I talked, I had a conference call with Perry, just absolutely today. So I need to go back and talk to Catherine. I did send a memo about that. So I need to go talk to Catherine, but I'm hoping it was very positive conversation, so.
We think in.
Let me find out a little bit more. I'm hoping this month. I hate to say that in public and I'm glad Mac's gone and everybody's.
There's somebody here that would tell anything.
We don't want to jinx anything here. Anyway, so.
Finally, option 10 is what you just talked about.
Oh, we're still got options.
Yeah, yeah. Which is what came back from the Statutory Review Committee, which was to expand the TIF from 54.7 million to about 63.5 million. Now, the life of the TIF, everything else being equal, would be extended to about four more years. And that's really all we need to discuss on this, on this proposal. So that's really all I have and tell us what you want to do.
All projects we did funded in three years, even if we added and kept the other projects. Okay.
Last comment I have is a lot of the feedback that I got on the cultural facility issue was if we don't even know what it is, why are we collecting the money to, you know, to fund it? And I think for some of us, the senior center process, you know, kind of validated that, you know, why, why collect 8 million dollars if we really don't have control over it? I guess in a way we do, we can override the Statutory Committee, but then that's stepping on people's toes. I guess the other comment that I would make would be if we can take 30 or 60 days and revisit this, maybe during that window of time, what I think would be helpful would be, I think this was even discussed with the Statutory Committee, but I don't remember that for sure. If we could talk to, like, I see Scott in the chamber or visit Norman or other community partners and let's have a town hall or let's have some kind of a discussion about, you know, if we, if the cultural center, culture facility is not the senior center, let's assume those chips fall into place. What do we think that money would be used for? So that we, as we're making a decision about, because if we slow down the collection of the funds, you know, that may or may not impact how quickly we could build wherever this cultural facility is or whether or not we want to keep it as a, as a project or take it out as a project. And it's just, I struggle with the idea of what could that, what could that be realistically? And I've heard rumors and I know that in, I think, 2012, there were minutes from a public meeting. And now it's six years later, maybe it's time to have a kind of a follow-up discussion of what could that look like and maybe get the county, you know, get some of those folks involved. And if we push this off for 30, 60 days, maybe that's a window of time to have that conversation. I think that would be helpful to me as opposed to just saying, we're going to keep the, keep the project in place even though the Statutory Committee rejected it as a senior center, but we have no idea what it's going to be. I mean, some of the feedback I've heard from the community is that they have concerns about that.
And I absolutely understand that. We've gone a long time. Same thing for the Lifestyle Center. If we don't know what it is now, then when are we going to know what it is?
That's pretty well defined though in the agreements. We know what that is. We know the Lifestyle Center is a student development agreement. We've already, we have had a proposal.
We have, but we still don't have a proposal for it. And we know that the original thing that was proposed, they're not developing those much anymore. That's all, that's all I'm saying. We, it's the same thing.
When we started collecting these funds in 2006, we didn't know what any of these things were doing. And council authorized all of these projects without the blanks having been filled in. We didn't know what Legacy Park would be. We didn't know what the configuration of the I-35 and Robinson interchange would be. We didn't know any of these things. There was no contemplation.
Well, that was, that was changed in the middle of the stream, so.
Best thing about the whole thing.
All right. Any, any final comments? Because I'm going to close this meeting out, Mr. Bryant.
I just wanted to make one comment on the cultural facility and the land nomination. The development agreement actually does have a deadline and that is 2026. So, you know, if it's something you want to work on to get that defined, just have that in the back of your head that 2026 is the deadline.
Yes.
Potentif.
So do I, looking, do I hear basically the council's direction right now is option one for now? Do nothing for now?
For a little bit. So option one.
We're not, we're not ready to make a decision on the other options yet. So that is correct.
But will we revisit in 60 days?
There's some good options in there. Within a 60-day period, we'll, so it could be sooner. If we have other information, we will, but within 60 days, we'll revisit it. So, all right. Thank you all very much. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn. Second, second.